The flag of allegiance.
Could I have a motion to open the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Sag Harbor?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Before we start, I just wanted to thank Alex Matheson, who's leaving our board for his years of service. So, thank you, Alex. Next, we have minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Great, and I have no corrections.
Nothing.
Nothing, so. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June seventeenth meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Sag Harbor?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, next on the agenda is correspondence requiring action, is there any? No, okay, great. Next, we have old business. And first on the agenda is fifty-seven Palmer Terrace.
They have put in a request to withdraw the application.
Totally withdraw it. Okay, could I have a motion to withdraw the application for fifty-seven Palmer Terrace?
Make the motion to withdraw fifty-seven Palmer Terrace.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Next on the agenda is one thirty-two Jermaine Avenue.
They have requested Jermaine.
Okay.
For the record, my next meeting is August nineteenth.
Okay, great, could I have a motion to adjourn one thirty-two Jermaine Avenue to the August nineteenth meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Next on the agenda is forty-
Jeff, do you know all the members' names?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, great, next on the agenda is forty-nine Ryson Street. Hey, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Parker Bowers, great, from Princeton, two seven nine Main Street, Sag Harbor.
Great, thank you, you can proceed.
Uh, good evening, board, I'm just gonna share my screen for the plans are also joined by Mark Isenkey, architect of the project, he's on via Zoom.
Uh, could you state your name and address for the record too, Mark? Uh, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, yeah, Mark Isenkey, thirty-six East Twenty-third Street, New York, New York.
And have you spoken before?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, you guys can proceed.
Good evening, board, we were in front of this board about two months back for this application. Um, the board had the board has some concerns and requests. Thank you, uh, and so since last meeting, there have been revisions made to the application. Additionally, we have gone to ARB and we did a site visit with Mr. Steadrop. And I don't think the memo was shared with this board, but I will forward it. We don't see contributing historic structure, historic district, and there are concerns about the renovation to the rear of the structure. Uh, Mr. Steadrop went to the premises, he did identify the existing rear addition as non-historic. He noted in his write-up that the framing of the store and construction of a new extension on this footprint is designed to be lower than the bridge of the existing roof and will not be seen from the street. Um, so applicant has revised the application, I'm gonna show up on the screen.
So, before you start, we don't have that, correct? Do you, no, none of us have have a new set of drawings.
Yes, you do.
Uh, I don't have anything for this, do you?
I think I have a-
For forty-nine Ryson? This is, that was what was-
This is the last one.
This is the last one.
Yeah, you guys, they were brought in for the June, but we had during June, so they would've been dropped off.
Oh, oh, so it's, it is the June sixth, oh, okay, okay, never mind.
If you go to page eight four oh two, no significantly, I'll wait. So on page eight four oh two, which is also up on the screen, you'll see, uh, the side elevation. So initially, applicant proposed a single roof ridge level with the front, we have reduced that and also stepped it down, um, to not overpower the existing historic structure and part of the subservient. In doing so, we also reduced the amount of pyramid intrusion. And we've also broken up the pyramid intrusion, so I can zoom in. You'll probably be able to see it a little better on the printouts, but the storage request that we identified the air, uh, which completely went away. Oh, we do have the breakdown of the roof and the door bars on that same page.
So what is the total, um, proposed pyramid violation now?
So the increase would be one thousand two hundred one fifty from the existing intrusion to the proposed intrusion. The total proposed intrusion is three thousand two hundred ninety-five. The existing is two thousand sixty-nine. Um, right now, the structure is very close to the property line, just a couple feet. And so also in this application, we are increasing the conformity of that side yard setback, you know, giving more space between these two structures.
And where? I'm sorry. Where, where on the plans is the pyramid violation noted? I don't-
Four oh two, there's a chart in the top right-hand corner. I also have it up on the screen.
Okay, no, I just wanted to so one thousand two hundred twenty-six.
Yes, that's the delta between the existing and the proposed.
Great. So the footprint hasn't changed, is that correct?
Footprint does change, so I can pull it, you referenced the survey.
Mm-hmm.
I'll line up the existing.
Yep.
To the proposed, I can-
Okay, so it's changed slightly.
Yeah.
Is the distance, um, sort of east to west different? It looks to be the same.
Yeah, so existing, if you're looking at the survey, the existing is a dotted line.
Yeah.
It's a couple feet, so we are moving the proposed addition in line with the existing structure, so it's not visible, and then there is a, um, a proposed patio and kind of like a s- a single-story fun room off to the north, but because of the grade of the site and how set back it is, it would be very difficult to see that from the street. But we also, and we do have thirteen point one foot setback on that, which if this was subject to the four tenths rule, um, the setback requirement would just be ten feet, similar to the other properties in the neighborhood.
But the dimension from the house toward the swimming pool, let's say, that's the same in both proposes, correct?
The house to the swimming pool.
Yeah, that dimension from the house to the swimming pool?
The swimming pool is moved-
No, 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 I'm just, just the house dimension, I'm just trying to figure out, is the proposed left to-
Rear.
The rear, is it smaller or less or-
It's longer.
It's longer.
Yeah, you can see the red, sorry if I wrong, Mark, it's, but the-
No, that's, yeah, it's about six feet, uh, further back.
No, no, from what you had proposed, I know it's bigger than the existing, from what you had proposed the last time, has the addition bigger toward the swimming pool?
No, that, that, so that wall has remained where it is, the footprint of the extension has been reduced by stepping down further.
And stuff, but it's not, it's still the same extension out from the house.
In length, yes.
Prior submission.
Right. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, do any, uh, board members have any questions?
We also knew of the pool, so we no longer need to be dimensional related to the pool.
And the pool got smaller.
Yes. It was previously thirty by seventeen in the, in the last submission, and it's now been reduced to twenty-four by fourteen.
Twelve by twenty-two.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, twelve by twenty-two, to the, yeah, that's right.
So you're, you're under on both lot coverage and building cover, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
And the rear yard coverage conforms?
Just as a side question, what was the building inspector's ruling on the cottage?
So if a stop work order was issued, we went to the ARB and we did obtain ARB approval for the, for the work done. Um, that was a mistake.
It doesn't need a, it didn't need a building permit?
A building permit is being applied for, so a stop work order-
Because my question wasn't, th- this might be a question for Liz. Normally, if a building is demolished, then the pre-existing, uh, non-conformity goes away and you have to reapply?
Nothing was demolished.
Well, i- it's debatable, when every board in a building is replaced, some people would consider that being demolished, even if a bulldozer has not driven over it. And my, my view of that building is that every single piece of wood or any other material in that building is new. I just, I'd like to get a ruling from the building department, if they don't see it that way, this is, this really isn't even, it's, it's to get a ruling from the building department, should we not worry, because it's happening all over the village, as I've said in other meetings, historic houses that have been approved by the architectural review board, every single thing about the historic house is now new, except it's on the same footprint and it has the same shape and the windows are in the same place, but all the historicity, the patina of the building, it's all disappeared. And we need a, we need, and this is a serious thing that's happening all over the village, in my opinion, it's serious, we need a, a, a reading from our new architecture review board and also the building inspector about how we are going to deal with that. Well, it's kind of what defines a building being demolished and what defines, I, I say the architectural review board in part because they determine whether the historic nature of the village is being preserved or not, and there are some people who think that every si- if every single thing about a historic house is gone, then the historic nature of the house is gone as well.
Well, that's like two separate questions.
Right, I think one's a building inspector, but I think one is for the architectural review board as well, thank you, that's all, thanks.
Just a comment for this specific, the Steadrop did identify that rear structure is not historic and not contributing, just-
My only question was that if the building inspector, when he gives this some thought, does decide that the building was demolished, then you would have to reapply for these setback variances that would be needed. It's not gonna apply to this because, but, anyway, okay.
In the- Um, I think those are proposed. Um, just on that point, every building inspector has sort of determined their own rules for demolition, and they've always been different, some of them did it as percentage, they, they all had different rules, and I don't know, I don't actually know what Tim's ruling on demolition is, so-
I think this has something to do also with the architectural review board about the nature of historic building.
In terms of demolition, the building inspector decides what the rules are for demolition, I mean, the, it has to be approved, yes, it has to be approved by the, the, the architecture review board also.
There are members of the architecture review board that in several buildings around the village right now say that if they had known that was what was gonna happen, they would never have approved it.
Right, which is why we're also, no, but it's also why we're-
But I'd like to get a settle, because it keeps coming up.
Yes.
We-
We're trying to require-
I can add to this conversation briefly, there's a new architectural review board and chair first in plus. Understanding that there's a new protocol uh, that they would adhere to, but part of the reason why I have been asking for description of work, because you apply for these applications, is that the distinction is made, you know, what's gonna happen to the house prior to work being done, whether it's selective demolition or entire demolition, um, it's on paper, so, hey, for, I'm all, he raised a good point, but that's how we like to see descriptive, like, graphic standards.
Uh, okay, getting back, um, getting back to this, um, you had a question about we, we talked about the AC handlers a little bit, and those are in a new position, correct?
The ACs are south-
Right.
The structure, um, as far as a new location, um, they are in line with the, what's to be the existing structure, um, and existing steps. And I will say that, um, a neighbor to the south who's also going through-
Right.
Process, there's also proposed AC, so that the neighbors have a very good relationship, and they kind of said, we're gonna put our AC unit so that it's just one area of noise and not spread out, uh, the two properties.
So they were noted on the previous, the dimensions of those were noted on the previous survey, but it sort of got left off of this one, but they are part of, they are a France item.
Yeah, it's on the, it is on A zero zero one of the architectural drawings, we do show the AC units.
Right, but it, it needs to be on the survey too, doesn't it, Liz?
We can, we can absolutely-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
No, I'm just trying to lose sense. Did you have any other questions, Val?
No.
And I can't remember, where were we with the, I don't have the draw, in GFA on this particular?
We are under the permitted, um, the exact number is two thousand seven hundred and-
Okay. Great. Dame, do you have any questions? So let's just, we'll open it up to the public for some questions for a second, and then I'll come back. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to forty-nine Ryson Street? Anyone on Zoom? No, no, okay. Great, so, um, do you have anything else to add? Hey, uh, how are you feeling about-
My close of public hearing, I'm just gonna-
I'm in favor of granting the variance.
Okay, we're just wanting to get a-
Reading.
Yes. Val, you feeling comfortable with this now?
Well, this addition has been mass and scale fits within, or an attempt has been made to fit within the pyramid, and it obviously shows on drawing a four hundred that the roofline has been held to a height, you know, minimum request, so I'm okay with the addition.
Okay, great, and you have anything else to add before we close, okay, great, so could I have a motion to close a public hearing for forty-nine Ryson Street?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for forty-nine Ryson Street?
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Great. Next on the agenda is fifty-three Ryson Street. And again, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Parker Bowers, great, three hundred and eighty, two seven nine Main Street, Sag Harbor, attorney toward the applicant. Um, since the last meeting, um, well, during the last meeting, uh, the board reviewed this application, it was the second time, and there was, um, the board was comfortable approving everything except for the pool, request was made to increase the side yard setback to the pool, so applicant has done just that, um, it's basically doubled the proposed side yard setback, we was initially requesting, uh, I believe six feet, and now we are requesting about, uh, twelve and thirteen feet, uh, to the side yard. To the, that was the remaining issue, um, for this board, so we are back here today seeking a pool.
Great, thank you. So, um, comments and questions from the board? Like, everybody was fine with the other elements of the project. I mean, I think it's a much better proposal now in terms of, um, the pool location. If, if this were a principal structured, with the, the four tenths rule would apply to this property, correct? I mean, it is a fairly narrow parcel.
Yeah, it's less than fifty feet wide.
Yeah, we had observed at the last meeting that if you move the pool ninety degrees, you wouldn't need any variance at all, and you could also have a larger pool.
I'm just gonna state that for the record. Look at this.
Yes, yeah.
Did you, um, come up with any other, um, determining factors that we could use as distinguishing this property from other properties?
We have letters from every adjoining neighbor, most importantly, the neighbor that would be impacted, so the neighbor to the south, um, there will be a double row of fences and vegetation, um, you know, the setback is fifteen, this is twelve, thirteen, so it is, I, we do not believe it's substantial, don't believe there are any impacts on the environmental conditions, it won't be seen from the street, won't have an impact on the neighborhood, uh, pools are a very common feature, uh, in village and the neighborhood specifically.
I think we'd probably wanna require some sound attenuating, you know, fencing probably along that southern property line. Um, I know that we had already talked about doing that on the northern property line for the AC handlers.
Yes.
Right. Um, perhaps the, the fence along the southern property line might be taller, could be taller than four feet to help mitigate the sound.
Yeah, there has been existing, um, fence there now, the, the shared fence, um, but there's also gonna be a substantial vegetation and then another fence, um, so we're happy to add some sound attenuation to that.
I display it.
Yeah, so you, you just state your name and address for the record?
Alex Matts, security room.
Uh-huh. Just, just be aware-
Just pointing out that, um, there is a six-foot fence, exists already, a mostly solid fence, uh, there's gonna be an additional four-foot pool fence, uh, and that will be solid in order to attenuate the sound, um, but we have that, and, and there's also gonna be a row of dense vegetation, so the pool screening from the neighbor, so they won't be able to see the pool at all, uh, and we did remove a stash, six feet to twelve, thirteen feet, which is, most likely fifteen, and there's plenty of precedent for that, actually, quite a, quite a bit less.
Great, thank you. So while we're sort of thinking here, let's open, I'll open it up to the public to see if there's any public comment on, um, so is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to fifty-three Ryson Street?
No.
Nobody on Zoom? Okay. Um, I guess considering that this is such a narrow lot, it's a, it's a much better proposal than the original one, I, I think that it would be nice, probably at least parallel to the pool and the area of the pool, if there was some sound attenuating fence along there, and the four-foot fence at least that's gonna be installed.
Right.
If we were to approve this, I don't know, what are you thinking, Tim?
I still would like to move it, so it doesn't need any variance, it's part of our job to, but this is a significant change, this is a fairly minimal variance, so I don't have a problem with it.
Right.
You said planting or proposed plantings would occur?
Yes, we submitted, um, a landscaping plan, I believe, two months ago, it is in the file.
Okay.
All right.
And then we'll be, we'll be taking it to ARB.
All right.
Those will be six foot minimum high.
Okay. And Dame, do you have any comments?
I'm, I'm fine with it, it's, uh, you know, much better than the original six feet, and with the solid tending fence, it's great.
Uh, Liz, in our, uh, decision, can we call it the narrowness of the property as a determining factor, because it's un- it's a fairly unusually narrow site.
Forty nine point five five, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the decision.
Okay. And I believe, as I recall, you're reducing the lot coverage?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's another determining factor.
So despite, for some introduction, the pool lot coverage has gone down, you've doubled the setback from your first proposed, you've got two fences.
Yeah.
You have plantings, you've got four layers of support, so you have some stimulating, mitigating factors to consider in support of the application. And the fourth fence rule would have put this in compliance. Yeah. Those are circumstances.
Right, uh, anything else from the board? Okay, so, uh, do you guys have anything to add before we close?
Well, I don't think in the determination, we had talked about the sculpture enclosure and anything that-
Yes, I've got a, I have that noted, yeah, okay, do you guys have anything to add before we close? Okay, great, so could I have a, a motion to close the public hearing for- Okay, great. So could I have a a motion to close the public hearing for fifty three Ryson Street?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Great, so the board is comfortable, everybody's comfortable with it, okay. So could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for fifty three Ryson Street, noting its, um, narrowness? And in terms of the, um, variance for the shed, that's actually an open sculpture enclosures, or we're calling that, and that the AC handlers would have at least a four foot high sound attenuating fence on the northern side of the property. And on the southern side of the property, um, adjacent to the pool, there would be at least another four foot sound attenuating fence. And, uh, could I have a motion to director attorney to write a decision including those elements?
Yes, I'm.
You want a motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed?
Opposed.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda is eighteen Hampton Street. Great, thank you. Could you just state your name and address for the record? Great, thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you. I would like to progressive few numbers, I was the list that's already happened on the agenda. Based on that submitted.
Oh, um, yeah, the the notice on the agenda never changes.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, it 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 is what it is when you first, it changes through the meetings, but the notice never changes. So your variance is major. Also. Sure.
So there is. And on the cover sheet, there's a note that talks about all the new material, proposed new material. The cedar roof, all of the siding, windows trimmed. New items will match the, you know, the existing material. Want to point out that the existing extension of the house of the cedar roof. Well, the story of how was part of the house was re-roofed during COVID. And there was a special allowance given to allow them to re-roof the roof to that full shape. Regarding the, uh, the most recent survey that everyone should have.
Is that the one dated June twenty sixth?
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Twenty sixth survey.
Thank you.
That picks up on the additional spot elevations done by Saskis on the rear boundary line.
So on that particular, um, pyramid line, this page, you go to page A six point two. The this line you're showing is still not correct. It's it's described as twenty six foot one from the deck, and it's actually twenty one point six from the house.
Six point two or five point two?
Uh, six point two.
Doesn't matter, I didn't get it.
Um, there it shows to the point, not to the point, the proposed
Addition.
Edition.
Right.
Is the twenty
One point six.
Six feet.
Right, but the drawing shows it as twenty six foot one inch from the deck. It's a reverse number and also from the deck, not the house.
I see that on A six point two.
Yes. I just, it was just a mistake that I noticed.
Yeah.
You may not have a varying, uh, violation there, we're just it's hard to tell. I drew a line across it. It might hit and not. If you're gonna have to do it, um, you know, in your actual drawings.
Sure, I I, uh, I don't believe we do, but we can always, we can correct it.
And I see that you've reduced the pyramid violation now to
If you read the notes on A six point two, the, uh, the proposed total percent of the supposed volume protruding the pyramid line is four point nine five.
And and you're at nine hundred one cubic feet, correct?
Correct.
Right.
What what's the, um, that's not the total, is it?
The total of the proposed volume project protruding of the proposed addition.
Is now nine hundred.
Yeah, we've reduced the size of the second story addition. We've also, um, have the Bilko and
Yeah, that's
HVAC units where they are. And so the unit projects
That already violates.
Less into the backyard in the second floor.
So there's seven thousand eight hundred seventeen existing cubic feet. Variance, correct? I just wanna get it straight. And then what's the proposed addition to the seven thousand eight hundred seventeen?
Actually, we should look at this.
And we're talking about strictly the
The cubic feet pyramid variance.
It's nine hundred and eighteen feet.
Okay, thank you.
And the other point that was brought up at the meeting, previous meetings, was the idea that there would be a connector, uh, so that the ridge
So the total goes eight thousand seven hundred fifty.
Well, good, so if we just go back to the pyramid violation a second, the, um, the total existing house violation is what? Three thousand five hundred?
Three thousand five hundred and forty five. And if you divide that by the fourteen
No, 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 we're just, we're just looking for cubic footage numbers.
Yeah.
So it's clear that the existing is seven thousand.
Right, so why on the, um, there's a a sort of a, um, something to clear up here.
Sure.
Because the, that's what you're saying, the existing violation is.
That's right.
But in the original notice, your existing violation was
Building inspector determined that it was seven thousand eight hundred seventeen feet.
What was seven thousand changed?
The existing
The existing pyramid violation.
Which might that?
According to the building inspector, and it's not, the original variances stated that it was seven thousand eight hundred seventeen.
Says, um, to protrude this protrude into the sky plane, a total of ten thousand six, uh, hundred sixty eight cubic feet, where seven thousand eight hundred seventeen cubic feet already violates the pyramid. And two thousand eight hundred fifty one cubic feet is proposed, where zero is permitted. So we know, we understand that you reduced the two thousand eight hundred fifty one is now reduced down to nine hundred one. But the seven thousand eight hundred seventeen shouldn't
Half of the thirty five forty five.
Right, but it shouldn't. Oh, it was because they were taking it from the wrong place. That's part of the problem, isn't it? You were, you were taking it from, not from, um, actual grade, correct?
Correct. Remember, you, you were the one who pointed that out.
So I, they were taking it.
So the building inspector is wrong in here with
Well, he didn't, he didn't do that. They, those were numbers that
We provide.
So what is the total? The reason I'm going to this is that, and maybe a broader question would be neighbors on either side are very much against this.
Yes.
And it's unusual that they are as vociferous about it as they have been. Uh, it it's always good if outside of this meeting, applicants can meet with neighbors and hopefully come up with some kind of compromise that that at least, uh, makes some people feel better, if not does doing away with their
We actually kind of
Concerns completely?
After the June
Yeah. And can you report anything back to us about, now that you've put up with these plans, are they now satisfied or willing to?
I don't wanna speak for them. I'm surprised they're not here.
What, well, what was your sense of the?
My, my sense was that we could work this out. And that was after, that was right after
And so, and what you've brought to us now is the result of it working out?
I believe so.
Okay, well, that's
I don't wanna speak for anyone else, but you can see the difference in the size.
So what, what is the total pyramid variance now? Both the proposed and the existing?
Existing is the three thousand five hundred and forty five, and we're tacking on nine hundred and one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So the other two items that we had talked about were total lot coverage, which you've reduced from thirty five point fifteen down to thirty five.
Correct.
But Liz, I had a question about that, because that lot coverage isn't really grandfathered, because the, it includes the deck that was built without permits?
Can't count, uh, it's not, it doesn't give grandfather, it's just built without permits.
Right, and that, did we determine actually that that was the case? That it was, that there were no permits for that deck that was built? I can't remember.
I thought we, I'll, I'll double check.
Double check.
I love.
There was no
And there was a permit.
There, there was a permit.
But I will double check.
Okay.
I believe if there was, that one point and that permit.
Okay, but they built, there was something wrong, though. They built the deck to a different size.
I think what they wound up doing was adding staircase in a place where
It wasn't approved.
It may not have, that may not have been approved.
Okay.
But not the footprint of the deck itself.
Okay.
The other thing is, previous meeting, we had come in with, um, coverage helps where the proposed building coverage was going to be nearly thirty percent, twenty nine point something. And so that's been pulled back to twenty seven point four six.
Right, because you've reduced the distance, it's extending out
Correct, yes.
To the south.
Yeah.
Sort of east, west, southwest.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
This is not change our request for the variance for the thirteen point seven feet regarding the deck where it is now and where it's been for many years.
Right.
And, uh, and also the dress that we, uh, side, the total side yard, said that, that hasn't finished.
Right.
We're just trying to clear up those older matters.
And just so we know, we can sort of get an idea of the, um, the height of this. Do you happen to know what the, let's say, the plate height is on the second floor from the, you know, from the floor up to the top of the plate? We don't really have any section.
Six point two or is five?
I don't think there are any section numbers, are there?
I may not have run a little bit. I apologize, I don't have a full
Okay. I'm just curious, because sometimes, um, reducing the plate height can also help. You know, it it reduces the massing of the structure, because it's not only the pyramid violation, but just because where the property is, the way the, where the adjacent neighbors are, the, um, you know, it it has a negative impact on the impact to the name of, you know, the house, because it's it's high and the neighbor to the west is low.
Neighbor is actually higher.
Well, one is higher and one is lower. It's the one that's lower, that's it's actually shedding sort of the raw end of it. Um, do any of the supporters have any other questions? I'm still a little concerned, I guess, about the building coverage. I don't know what you're feeling.
I'd like to have confirmed what the neighbors have to say.
Yeah, I really don't have, I can't speak for
Maybe, are they, either one of them, uh,
No.
online?
Nobody is here, which, and they've they've seen the plans because they've filed it.
The new ones.
We, we
No, and we don't, and we don't hinge our decisions on
Yeah.
whether the neighbors approve or not, but but I, it it would make a difference, at least to me, knowing that that they accepted this.
On the, on the Zoom call, if you'd like her to comment.
Um, I like to hear from the neighbors, one way or another. And once again, just for the record, our decision would not hinge on whether the neighbors liked it or not.
Sure.
But it is, it is an additional uh, thing that would be definitely in your, in your client's favor. If they even, even if it was reluctantly, um,
Granted. That's all I have.
I mean, I think it's much better than where we started.
You mean in March?
Yes, 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 because there's a, you know, it's much more in scale with, um, the house, um. I don't know. Val, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions. But in terms of reduction, C reduction, but I would like to wind my thoughts with Mr. McGuire and see what the neighbors have to say. At the first presentation, I had concern about the Fierstens because they did not comment. And when he did appear, his objections were quite numerous in terms of the, um, concerning block this view, block of aspects of his backyard that he felt were important to him. So I feel that he's deferring to this for take, um, inappropriate, uh, deliberation towards his, um, additions, but
Now, I wonder if the, the owner could comment on Mr. Fierstein's, uh,
Your under sworn testimony, so this is like a court of law, you you tell us.
The owner is on the Zoom call? Yes, and, uh,
She's allowed to speak.
Yes.
I would love to comment.
Okay.
Especially on that comment.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Ruth Zuckerman, eighteen Hampton Street, Sag Harbor, one one nine
And you were sworn in at the last meeting?
I was.
Yeah, so you can, uh, comment?
Yeah, um, I I'm just, I have to be honest, I'm just actually not fully clear on what the problems were with, with each neighbor. I do understand with the Fierstens, Michael, uh, that he was concerned about his airspace and, and blocking that. Um, I guess I just don't understand, you know, what the difference is in terms of the fact that his house is built up, and every time I go to the bathroom, I have to stare right into his house. I mean, I, I, I'm unclear as to what the difference is and why one person can do one thing and then the other person can't. In terms of Peter, uh, the resounding messages coming from him were that I was a single woman and that, um, he thinks I'm gonna flip the house. Um, like all, or I'm sorry, that the house would block the sunlight of his, for his garden. I spoke to my landscape person who said that's absolutely not true, that the way, the direction in which the sun comes and where the house is gonna be added on to will actually not affect his garden at all. I I understand that everyone wants things a certain way, and I I wish we could all be happy, but I guess what I wanna leave this, I wanna leave this by saying, I understand you said this decision is not up to the neighbors, but it sounds like it is. Like, is that what we're waiting for? And I think it's significant that they didn't show up today. I I don't know. I, this is new for me. Forgive me if I'm sounding naive. This is all new for me.
We generally like to get comments from neighbors, but it's, it doesn't determine what our decision will be, because we base it on a far, a five factor.
Okay.
So the, um, you know, I, we can understand the, the concern of a neighbor to your, um, east, because your house is so close to the property, and anything you do to your house just increases the mass, you know?
Yes.
Quite near the property line. But you have moved the addition more toward the center of the property, which is a, a positive thing.
A significant relief.
To both neighbors, so, um, and it's also, um, reduced in scale, so those are, you know, important things that you guys have done to help mitigate the impact of the new structure on the neighbors.
So have you spoken to your neighbors yourself?
I have not. I quite frankly, got the sense that, I I, not got the sense, but I'm not sure they wanna speak to me. I mean, Peter was I'm not sure they want to speak to me. I mean, Peter was very hostile. I'm happy to talk to Michael. I don't, I don't, if Peter wants to talk, I'd be happy to. I, I just didn't get that sense. But again, completely open to doing it.
Well, I just thought that if your landscape designer has said that his concerns are not well founded.
Yes.
If he were to learn of that, perhaps, because that was his, his sole objection that I heard.
Yeah.
If he knew that that wasn't the case, I would think that that might mitigate his opinions and, and those objections from both your neighbors, if you were to speak to them, might go away.
Okay.
Which would just make it much easier for us.
I understand.
That's, they were noticed, though.
They were.
Were noticed, this is a hearing, it's a continued public hearing, and they wanted to be here to speak.
Well, but they've been here twice.
Yeah, I know.
And we have suggested, but we suggested at the last meeting that they speak.
Yeah.
And it seems as though they haven't spoken. No, I mean the neighbors outside of this meeting.
Yeah.
Often, or at least in the old days, it used to be, neighbors would go out in the hall and meet.
Yeah.
And often, they.
They can't always happen, though.
No, no, we, we did have.
No, I'm just trying to drill into it, too.
But it did happen, and I spoke with them. And we spoke for quite a while. My wife happens to be a friend of Pete's. You know, we were out on Main Street in a very pleasant manner, having a conversation about making it work for everyone.
All right. Break.
Thank you. The one neighbor, Michael Fierstein, had shown opposition because he's looking at a very long wall, you know, which is less than ten feet from his property line. And that concerned him. A scene made a break in the roof to decrease the massing. I feel like he could go more with that because the ridge of that roof, as it came into the main house, the existing house perpendicular to that was at the same height. Now you've come down according to the Secretary of Insidious standards, but come down only partially, there's room to continue that, to give him a little bit more light and space. And I feel that was an important comment that he made in terms of quality of life issue. So we do take.
I really thought he was talking about previous design.
Yeah.
Where, where he was talking about how the building was extruded right along the existing, like, wall below it.
Yeah.
I don't think he's commented on this latest plan where we moved it over for seven, I mean, quite a bit. Yeah, so.
I just see room, little bit more improvement. The bedroom has decreased.
Yes, it has significantly, yeah.
It's coming down.
And we've left the HVAC units right where they are, you know, and that's like allowed us to leave the cellar entry where it is.
Okay. Well, this one is less than forty feet as it fronts the Hampton Street.
No, I, I know, I was listening very carefully here about the rising street decision a moment ago. And, you know, Sag Harbor is kind of left in person, a lot. This happens to be one of them that is really small. I don't know when.
So just, just to clarify, just a couple things. So in terms of the footprint, the only area that's really being increased is on the west side, correct?
Footprint?
Like, the first floor footprint is only the, you're keeping the.
Yeah, the, the existing first, the existing first floor, which is on the borders of the Fierstein property line, remains unchanged.
Right, and it's only, you're in, it's only the second story addition that affects them on that side, and that stepped in, leaving that existing one-story sort of shed structure.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think that, I don't know, I think that the, the building coverage and lot coverage are, are still a little bit on the high side, but I don't know what everybody else is feeling.
Well, the building coverage at twenty-seven point four six percent compared to twenty-three point five one percent.
Right.
Really compare with the twenty percent, which is where it should be.
No, no, I understand that, but this particular lot, I don't know that you could have it at twenty percent at any point. I understand what the rules are.
Right.
But we're going from, from twenty-three and a half to twenty-seven, just under twenty-seven and a half.
So I don't know, how, how are you feeling about that, Tim?
Well, one of our missions is not to increase nonconformity. That's why we're going back to the twenty, not the twenty-three that exists, so.
We're talking about a longtime Sag Harbor resident who wants to spend more time in his house with a family or extended family and grandchildren, and even be working the value of work.
It's not part of the five-part factor in making that determination because anyone can say anything that they want in terms of the betterment of their house. We need to have a legal basis to give you your approval, not all three of, or five of the factors have to imply the three of them minimum. And trying to find some legs for this application proposal to stand on, and I think that's what we're, we're going through at the moment.
Sure.
Well, and every week, it's, it's very, many, many houses in Sag Harbor are small by modern standards, and so it's very common that everybody buys a small house and then wants to make it bigger. This is not a unique thing that comes up, but there are limits to.
She didn't just buy a house.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Or your life, well, sometimes, though, as one, one of the neighbors suggested, sometimes when you need more space, you need to move. That the house has a limit and it can't get bigger than that.
Based on how the neighbors think.
Well, they, no, they do have to consider the impact to neighbors' properties.
Yeah, the first, the first thing that we'd have to decide among the, the New York State has set five guidelines that zoning boards go over. The first one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. So while the the neighbors, that's why the neighbors need to be taken into account to some extent. If they feel that there's a detriment to their property, then that's something that we have to take into account. Maybe we don't agree with them on it, and that's very possible. So that's why I'd like to drill down a little more.
Yeah, I'm surprised you're not here.
And get.
Because I'm saying, everything in the record is just says they're opposing it and, and they're not here tonight, so that's what's in the record.
Yeah.
He's saying, he's trying to give you an opportunity to speak with them further, but.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to speak with them anytime. I thought we, I thought we started that dialogue.
Well, or we, or we would put in the decision that you are testifying under oath that you have spoken with them and they no longer, and they no longer have the same problems. So if you're willing.
I can't speak on their behalf.
But you're, so then you're not willing to say that they're.
I'm telling this board of a positive statement by that neighbor, but no, nothing to substantiate those claims.
Let me clarify this. The meeting, and it's hard to call it a meeting, the long conversation that I had with the neighbors on both sides right after the June meeting on Main Street lasted for about how long was it?
Years.
It wasn't a two-minute conversation. It was a substantial conversation. It was, it turned, it ended in a, as a very, in a very pleasant way with my explaining how we were going to address the board's concerns on the size of the addition. And I think we've done that. I can't comment on on their behalf. Other than that, it ended in a very pleasant way.
Great, thank you. So, so I think that there is one.
I hope that you would have been here tonight.
Right, I think that there is one sort of concern that needs to be addressed in terms of that rear variance, whether or not there's any pyramid back there or not.
Be happy to take care of it.
So that just needs to be taken care of, so. I think that, just based on what the board is feeling, that we're, you know, if you, if there are any further reductions you can make to this, that's all positive. You know, the, the lot coverage and the building coverage are still on the high side as Val suggested, you might also examine other ways to either lower the plate height in that area or drop the ridge more. There are certain things that could be played with just to reduce the massing of it. And I think that that's, I think that you're very close to being to something that's acceptable. I don't know what the other board members are feeling.
And especially if you've got something from the two neighbors that goes in the direction that you're saying, a, a letter, which they could still say they're not happy with it, but given the givens in the world and the realities and things, they have found a way to live with it. If we had that, then, right? That would answer a lot of questions.
I saw, to some, to some degree, we.
And if, if they're not willing to do that, then we'll still make our decision.
I mean, because we have to take those things into consideration anyway, whether or not the neighbor objects to it, it's, it's there are basic facts about, you know, the location of the house in terms of the property, the light in the air and all of that sort of stuff. Whether or not the neighbor is opposed or in favor of it, we have to take those things into consideration, just as the board. So, I don't know, Val, do you have any other, any, any other comments?
Can you, can you put to either page A six one or A six two?
Either one, sure.
Yeah.
There's six two.
On the screen.
Oh, sure.
On that.
A six two.
Oh, they changed. You can see ridge as it comes off of the, the proposed ridge as it comes off of the main ridge.
Yes.
You've got a drop.
Yes.
Okay, continue that drop over. You're going to decrease the massing of that addition and reduce your pyramid violation. That was one of the concerns of the neighbor who's closest to the property line that you're overshadowing his sightline. And that ridge can pull over and you can start the ridge on the addition closer to at least, I'm eyeballing it a good eight feet away.
From where it is now or from the chimney?
From the drop, from the chimney, you've got a drop and it's about a three-foot drop.
A little more than that, but yeah.
Yeah, you could, that, that ridge does not impact the living space. You can keep that lower ridge all the way through and reduce mass and scale.
You understand?
Yeah. Last, last comment.
Any other comments? No?
Thanks.
From the board, David, do you have anything to add? No? Do you have anything to add? And we're, we're, just to be official here, there was no one from the public that wants to speak to eighteen Hampton Street, correct?
Ruth, do you have any last comments?
I don't. I just, I'm, I'm going to be broke before the construction even starts. So I'm very anxious, but I hope it all works out.
Well, I think you're, I think you're very close.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
And, and just to be clear, I will go reach back from that twenty-six foot to make it to the twenty-one foot.
Sure, it's just a correction.
Those drawings will reflect a change in the ridge height as we, as Val had suggested. And we will reach out to the neighbors, but I, again, I have no idea how they will, if they will.
They may not speak to you, they may speak to you, who knows?
Oh, I think they're delightful people. We had a lovely conversation. I don't, I, I don't see why they wouldn't speak to us. Yeah.
Great.
For table eight to the August nineteenth.
Yes, so could I have a, yes, could I have a motion to adjourn to the August next meeting?
Yes.
Meeting?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would if I could raise, did one first question about something else. It's a different project, will it be coming before the board eventually?
Um, not appropriate.
Just wanted to.
You could ask, you could talk to someone in the building department or you could ask Liz directly, but we don't really.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to new business, and first on the agenda is twenty-three Main Street. Great, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for twenty-three Main Street?
Make a motion to open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
Tora Matzoka, fifty Pinecrest Lane, Sag Harbor.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you, you can proceed.
We're here regarding outdoor seating.
Great, can you just explain what you're planning on doing?
Seasonal continuance of seasonal outside seating in a building.
So we need to waive parking.
Right.
So then, if they're asking for a waiver of parking, you have to look at the standards and three hundred dash twelve point six E specific variances. Which requires, when you're granting a variance to waive or modify the parking requirements for off-street parking under three hundred dash nine point six, we need clearly set forth in nature an extent of the variance by specifying the number of spaces required, the number of spaces to be required by the Board of Appeals, and the number of spaces waived by the Board of Appeals. And then you need to also be preceded in your action by a referral to the planning board and a review of a report by the planning board considering all any aspects of the variance. Remember?
Right.
We've preferred, we've seen the planning board for the. Which twelve point six E referral. It's just a form and then they, they give you feedback when you decide either way.
Okay, so I guess one question is, are the the seats that will be out in the parking area in addition to what's in the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay. So you're, and they will be added, do we specify which months they're added for? It's seasonal, correct?
Not January. Is it seasonal?
It, it might be tough to.
Or is it permanent? Is it seasonal or term?
People to sit out there in the winter time. The idea is to be seasonal.
So what?
What months are you suggesting that we?
Potentially the same months that the.
I am, and those months are.
For October.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And where do the tenants park now? Do they park in those five spaces and where will they park if there's no parking?
There are no tenants per se.
Okay.
We house over ninety percent of our employees within walking distance.
So no, there are no, because it's somewhere in here noted that they were, you know.
There are apartments on the second floor. That's what he means by tenants.
Uh, yes.
Where do they park?
Uh, I don't believe they have cars.
So they're not utilizing any of the spaces in the rear of the section? I don't know, can, we, we have to assume that they would be though, correct, Liz?
I, the, the code assumes that they do.
The code assumes they do.
There must be a certain number of employee parking spaces for, for a commercial establishment.
Right. And I'm guessing that five don't, do we know what the requirement is? But we, do we know what the requirement for parking for this site is? I mean, we have five, but that's.
There's a prior, there's a prior ZBA decision on this site.
Right.
And site plan, which, which specifically stated that they were required to have a certain number of I don't know if you waived parking before for this site, but they specifically stated that they were required to have five spaces on the site plan.
Okay.
So remember when we did the refrigerator, the outdoor refrigerator or freezer, whatever it is?
Right.
That was referenced, that prior decision.
Okay.
For the boards, you have to focus the planning and everything.
Right, okay.
Did you get a temporary okay from the planning board or from the trustees to have seating out there this summer?
I believe so, which is how I got.
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
Right.
So you don't need this to continue your seating for this summer?
To be honest, I'm a little confused. I, I think we keep going back and forth. I just.
Do you have seating, is there seating out there tonight, for instance?
Yes, there is.
So they went out, they went before the, the planning board.
Yeah, I, I happened to be at that meeting, yeah.
And the planning board wanted to fast-track sort of a special exception approval, but you can't do that, it requires a public. It requires a public hearing, it requires a lengthy review process for it to be correct and legal. So instead of doing that, um, they are just allowing them to do the process correctly before the boards and sort of freezing what was in place for the summer.
So
In order to get everything corrected the right way.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm just trying to get to what the urgency, I'm trying to get to what the urgency is.
There's, I guess there is, there's no urgency.
That's the whole point.
They've got a, they're sort of
Yeah, no, but I just mean if we, let's say we denied this tonight, does that mean the tables all go away tomorrow? Or can we kind of let, let this go through till the end of the season? I, I, here, I
Well, we have to get a
The place I'm coming from, the whole village is really concerned about parking. And so, uh, uh, I, at least for one vote, I'm reluctant to, to give up parking.
Well, you need to refer to the thing before you decide.
Well, I, I got a report that Nelson Pope gave to the planning board, that's not, no, okay, okay.
It's just a report. Um, I don't know, what are you, what?
So I don't have any questions myself, other than wanting to hear from the planning board
Right.
on that issue.
I don't know how are the board members feeling about the issue in parking? Any comments or questions?
Well, no, parking is always tough here, but I'd start with the planning board and then basically go from there.
Right. I would do the same defer this to the planning board. You know, what I don't like, and I'll be on record for this, is that people would trade off, uh, an establishment could trade off their parking for more seating, because this opens the door that shouldn't have hinges on it for a certain thing, and that's what we try to mitigate is unwanted intensification of use. But if this is going to the planners as the arbiter of that decision, I would be okay in pushing this forward to them.
Yeah, I mean, the one problem is we're creating more seats for people, but taking away the parking for the people to come and
But they could deny it.
Right. So, um, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to twenty-three Main Street? Anybody on Zoom, Harry?
Nobody.
Nobody, nobody, okay, so, um, could I have a motion to direct or returning to, um, requests that the planning board um, provide feedback for, um,
Seventy to three hundred dash twelve point six eight.
Right.
Or and also maybe the applicant, if we adjourn this, can give us some more ammunition about how do we justify increasing the number of people that will have to find a place to park to sit at these tables versus doing away with five parking places? You don't have to do that tonight, but you're, we're gonna adjourn and you'll come back. You don't have to do that tonight, but you're, we're going to adjourn and you'll come back.
Jess, just hold on one moment, we're having a little technical difficulties.
No worries at all, thank you.
Jess, can you still hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Jess?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
You can hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Next, next on the agenda is eleven Amherst Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
Can you unmute it?
Did I have?
Is it going? Okay, hold on one minute, let's just.
Recording.
Now.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so do we need to go backwards?
Jess, what, did you, did you miss anything?
I did not get the, whoever made the motion to close on the prior hearing on the, if we could just go back to that, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn 23 Main Street to the August nineteenth meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Now, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for eleven Amherst Road?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Brian DeSessa, twenty-two hundred Montezlave Avenue, New York. I'm here for eleven Amherst.
Great, thank you.
Haven't seen you in a while.
I know, yes. It's been a very long, it's been a long time.
I'm here tonight for placement of accessory structures in the front yard of a waterfront lot. Subject property is located at eleven Amherst. It's hardwood, it's a western facing lot and it's on the corner of Redwood Road and Amherst, which becomes a village, right? The applicant here, we're asking for is to place a pool and deck which is attached to the house. I just have some handouts for you with respect to Amherst for the character of the community. There's approximately thirty-three waterfront pools and decks on Redwood Lawn, including the rest of the village. So in terms of the character of the community, I would say decks and pools on the water side are part of the character of the community. In terms of feasible alternatives to locate this, the village code differentiates on waterfront lot that have any water become the front yard for setback versus the street. So no one wants a pool located in the street. It's a functional backyard which is on the waterfront side. In terms of substantiality for what we're asking for here, we're asking for no dimensional relief. Everything complies dimensionally as to what we're doing. It's just the location of the structure that it is between the house, which is the main dwelling, and the water, which is defined as the front yard. There wouldn't be no physical effects on the environmental neighborhood or community as several of these already exist. The application here is to put a shallow pool in, so it wouldn't be affecting groundwater and the village code does require that you maintain two, two and a half feet above groundwater. Anyway, it will require dry wells, it will require a review from the harbor committee, which we've already started discussing the application with. And then landscaping lines with the architectural review board after we've established the buffer area. The application not foreign, but as you see on the plan, proposes a fifty-foot non-vegetated buffer area, which is important to harbor committee rules and regulations. I would submit to this board that it is not a self-created hardship in that the lot is set up as it is. The applicant has endeavored to design this so that it doesn't require any dimensional relief, just a location relief. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So is the, I guess it's really a hot tub, correct? Or is that what, it's a plunge pool? Is it a plunge pool?
We haven't decided yet.
Okay.
Groundwater monitoring well in there. It's probably going to be four to five feet because of the elevation based on topography. And then the determination will be whether it's a stainless steel insert that gets dropped in, probably versus shooting gunight. That's going to be part of the structure.
So it's four to five feet deep?
That's going to depend on, yeah, that's a little bit.
But that's, yeah, okay. So where would the pool?
The pool is going to be located under this, because this is going to be slightly elevated.
Okay, so it'll be directly under this?
Yeah, which is also part of the application for relief because it's going to be between the pool and the water, which is also defined as the front yard.
So, and this will sit within the deck?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll go below the deck.
So the deck will be two or three feet above ground, two feet, and this will?
Sit exactly, so it's kind of above down, but.
Will it be above? According to the, according to the diagram, the deck is three or four feet above, or is that?
Yeah, it's about three to four feet above existing, right?
Right. And then is there, so and I noticed it, noticed that there's a pool fence sort of surrounding the deck. And I guess we'd be interested in having some screening along Amherst?
So there's, there's going to be screening on Amherst, so we were, prior to this thought, we were at the harbor committee.
Okay.
Harbor committee granted us permitting to re-use the bulkhead and put in a dock, as well as a preliminary review, the, the planting plan. Part of that, which is going to change, which you don't have, and I can give to you, which we know is the previous property owner, this is a new, we're the new property owners, had built retaining walls into the right of way that some extent, almost up to ten feet. We've committed already to the village and then we're going to relocate that to the property line. Depending on what that elevation is, we're then going to plant on, on top of that to screen the, the right of way. So we're, I don't have a definitive answer. There will be screening there. What it looks like, I don't know. We're still working that out with the manager.
Okay.
I can commit you that it'll be, you know, it'll be at least four to five feet and it's elevated and you're going to have.
So I guess we could include just something vague in our decision about screening of four to five. If we were to grant the variance, I'd put in the record also that this is an access road. Right, right.
It's not a.
Which will get no traffic other than people walking down to look at the water or whatever, but there won't be cars going back and forth and. Right. Differentiates it from other pools in the so-called front yard.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I've been down there. It's a, so, and there aren't, you know, it's an access road to the, to the water. You want, did you go there? Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the only thing that I noticed is we, you will need a dry well for this. I didn't really see that on your plan here.
So the dry well plan, it's going to be on the north side of the house. Right now, the engineer is designing the polytech septic system. Once we have that in place, then we will, we will set off dry well. So we, we will have, and those, and those dry wells will be outside of the fifty-foot buffer area.
Okay.
The harbor committee has identified trees on the northern side of the lane, so we will screen between those trees that, that will.
Great. Do other board members have questions? We don't want or need any kind of plans for the building itself. Well, there's not, the only variance they're asking for is the. Yeah, I'm just wondering if, just as part of our general standard operating procedure. It's a question to the chairman. I don't myself, but normally. Uh, well. Even if only one variance, small variance is required, we still. There's an existing deck there now. Is this going in the existing deck or? No, the whole house is going to be torn down. Oh, okay, okay. This is a torn down. Okay, so I don't know.
I mean, the harbor committee is going to make us plant out fifty feet back plus down inside with right of ways.
Do we need more than the survey to do, to deal with this? Sometimes we find things that the building inspector missed, et cetera, et cetera.
You didn't submit a survey?
I did.
Yeah, no, we have a survey. That's all we have is a survey. This is going to be a brand new house. The existing house that's there now will be torn down underneath the, underneath the deck.
Yeah, there's a variance for that.
No.
It's just in the front yard.
Pool and deck in the front yard.
And equipment.
The only thing we usually miss is pool equipment.
Right.
Or air conditioning units.
Right.
An air conditioning unit or window wall, front yard.
I did, I did, we didn't, we didn't notify that the equipment is going to be under the deck. It's technically the front yard, so that would be part of the application.
Well, I guess there's, is there a setback to the, I was from, from this property line, I can't see it on there. So all of your, I guess what Tim is getting at.
The house applies to all zones.
That's, but that's a.
Pyramid, side yard, except by the rear yard.
So the building inspector is, and we won't get involved at all then. It's just a question I'm raising. Okay, thank you, thank you.
I tried giving them to make many surveys, but then everyone says they want one, so it's.
So the building inspector has determined that the house needs no variances, the deck needs no variances. The only thing that needs a variance is that we're putting the deck and the pool in as accessory structures in a front yard.
And the equipment out of the deck.
And the equipment under the deck, right. Uh, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to eleven Amherst Road? Yes, could you come forward and state your name? Uh, you could just state your name and address, please?
Juliana Saba, I live at Notre Dame Road.
Great, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. There's a microphone right over you, so speak into that so that we can. Yeah, just so you're aware, I love you. Yeah, you may proceed.
Yes, just you guys made a comment just before about saying how nobody goes down that road at Amherst Road. I know a lot of people who do actually put their boats on and off that ramp there. It is pretty active. It's not just people walking and sitting on the sunset. I do think that that should be something to be accounted for.
Okay.
Also, there are two main, like four-way intersections that I'm slightly concerned about because on Notre Dame, we get a lot of flooding. There's an issue with flooding in, in Redwood. I don't think the town is addressing it. I think you guys are just like letting people build things and the pumps not getting put in. It's sometimes I literally cannot get out of Redwood. So I do have some issues with eleven Amherst. Brian did tell me when I first got here that they, Mala Sanders had the listing and I found it online. And the proposed original rendering showed an underground garage. Brian since told me that there's a new owner and they're redoing the renderings. I have not seen those plans. I am a little concerned because the lot is not that big. And my neighbor on Notre Dame, he just renovated his house and you guys, one board, made him leave, like, set back his property line, so he actually lost property, didn't even tear the house down. And this house is getting tear down, so I'm just wondering how is it not being affected? Like my neighbor's house is getting affected. He lost half, over half of his yard. And this house on Amherst is really not a big lot, so I'm interested to see the new plans and scale as well. And also in terms of variance, there are plenty of houses in Redwood that are way too tall. My neighbor to the left of me in Notre Dame can, like the woman was talking about before, I believe on, on Hampton Street, my neighbor can straight up see through my, into my window. So I am worried about the variance issues being given to these projects. So those are my concern, as well as the, for the two intersections that I was talking about before. I believe it's Redwood and then Amherst, and then it turns into like Amherst and Princeton as there's like two main. And all of the roads are downhill. So they flood. Like I said, there are times where I literally cannot leave or come home because all of the red, the roads, the main roads are flooded. So I think that's something to take into consideration. I believe that could be the environmental issue, but I do think that it should be monitored closely. But there is a flooding issue in Redwood. And moving things around, I know the appears, Brian said that there was no underground garage, but to even put that in, I just don't even know how somebody would think that's okay, considering we can't have basements on the, on the water. I think that's pretty much it, so I'd just say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, I mean, according to what, what we understand, the proposed house conforms to all of the zoning laws. And you'll be meeting what zone regulations, FEMA regulations, I'm assuming that all of that is taken into account, whatever flood zone. It's hard to read on here.
So the, the property is located in the next, so, so you can't have a lower level.
Right.
The previous design that, that we're speaking of, didn't work with an engineering subject because it went into ground.
Right.
That we're monitoring whilst we're raising that, but we don't need height or adjusting for that. The ceiling heights of the other levels. We have to control all of our water runoff and put in dry wells and everything else. And we do, I don't know what the situation was on the neighboring house that was discussed, but like fifty feet from the bulkhead back is being given back as a vegetated buffer. Right now, it's lawned down to the bulkheads. The property is shrinking.
Right.
Not meets and bounds wise, but in terms of the usual area.
Right.
And the proposed house is approximately three thousand feet over two floors, so it needs to scale for that lot. It meets the GFA, all the other coverages. The area does flood, but from the street, so anything that's on our property, we're going to, we're going to control and handle on that to not have runoff.
Great, okay. And there is an existing house there now. Right, yeah, right, right. Any other comments or questions from the board? No? Val, do you have any?
No, but I think to address the concern, this board doesn't regulate the, the flooding. It's really a different committee, but you do, it's a requirement for every building permit to have your roof runoff and groundwater runoff handled. And Redwood has a geography where some properties are in the flood zone and some are they call the X-zone, which is higher. We do take into consideration depth of the bottom of that pool to groundwater. Look at those things. So we do address, but your concern was hurt. It's why you know that.
Great, so, and if there are another questions from the board, and how are you feeling about? No, I would just say what's before us is so minimal. Right. That I don't have a problem with it. Whether there are other issues that we're not seeing or that might be concerned about broader Redwood, I have no idea, but this is very minimal and I don't have a problem with granting the variance. I mean, we can only make a decision about what we have before us, so. I just add one thing. When I made that statement that, I just meant to compare Amherst versus Redwood or any other road that's a through road open to cars. I understand that people use that access road, but not in the same way that all the other roads in Redwood are used, where there's regular car traffic. Right, but I think we're going to require screening along that anyway, so.
Yeah.
Take care.
It's, the, the screening is subject to species that harbor.
Yes, yes, we're just going to, we're going to have a very vague, but required screening. Any other comments or are we?
No comments. The house is being, when is the house being demolished?
We've, I've submitted an application to the ARB to demolish the house because our plan was in, we're, we're, the plan was to demolish the house, do the bulkhead, do the dock, work with the village to move the, the bulkhead in back from the right of way onto the property and from the house construction, as the law said.
Okay.
So the demo I'm hoping is due in August or September, and then work the process with the harbor committee and then we'll use the new house to start.
I asked a timeline question because we're giving a variance, you know, based on existing condition, you know, and what if that house?
No, the survey you have is the proposed.
No, but there's an existing house there currently. And we're about to grant an approval with that house existing in place.
I would be fine with you conditioning saying for the new house to be constructed.
Right, right.
It's, it's unenhanced.
It's just a distinction to put into the application or written to say.
Uh, any comments, statement? No, you're fine with that, okay, great. Uh, and there are no more comments from the public on eleven Amherst Road? Okay, so could I have a motion to close the public hearing for eleven Amherst Road?
I'm going to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Could I have?
Have a good evening.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Could I have a motion to? Direct our attorney to write a favorable decision for eleven Amherst Road, which would include four to five foot screening as approved by the harbor committee on Amherst Road. A dry well for the swimming pool. And acknowledging that the pool equipment will be located under the deck. I'll make a motion to instruct our attorney. For the proposed house. I'll add that in. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Now, decisions. First, the only one decision, ninety-two Bay Street.
An application to construct a permanent condition to the residence, a whole garage and a driveway and the front yard. So the property is fronts on Bins Street and High Street. It's a corner lot. It's in the fourth way zone district, it's eight thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet. And sought various variances to allow for the garage and pool to be constructed in the front yard on High Street. Where accessory structures are permitted and also require setback relief. After hearing feedback from this board and neighboring property owners, the applicant admitted reducing the variance requested by the community applications, specifically to reduce the garage from a two-power garage at four hundred and fifty-three square feet, which was fourteen point eight feet in the front yard, doing one-power garage, reduced to three hundred and thirty-five square feet, built it to a twenty-foot line area, all gold, through the requirements required, reducing the variance request there. And they also rotated the garage, allowing them to screen the garage entirely from High Street. The applicant also eliminated a proposed larger stone patio by the pool and shifted the pool further away from the front yard on High Street to thirty-five, to meet the thirty-five setback requirement, eliminating the original variance request for a thirty point nine foot to the pool entirely. And they also ultimately reduced the building coverage from eighteen point six percent to fourteen point four percent. And for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby determines to grant variance.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision as written for nine, I'm sorry, which number, ninety-two? Bay Street?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. And could I have a motion to close the public hearing for the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Sag Harbor?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Have a great night.
Thank you all. Be well. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.